It is six o'clock. I'd like to call this committee of a whole meeting to order in council chambers on August eighth, two thousand twenty-three. There is no electronic attendance tonight, so we will move to the oath of office. The first one we have is Jenna Robbins, who will be sworn in tonight as a police officer. Chief.
Thank you. Do you want to come forward? Well, thank you very much, Council. It's always a pleasure to be for you for an occasion like today. Before you, I have Jenna Robbins, who's completed her period of probation. She was hired on January twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Jenna grew up in Springfield, Ohio, and she attended Southwestern Senior High School. She graduated from high school and ranked twenty-four out of one hundred and forty-four graduates with a four-point-oh GPA. She earned a scholarship to play softball for Eastern Illinois University and graduated a year early, earning a Bachelor of Arts degree in Criminal Justice and Psychology. Post-college Jenna worked for the Charleston, Illinois Police Department as a community service officer and also as the Coles County Circuit Clerk's Office as a deputy circuit clerk. No stealing here from me.
I think I heard you right.
So you've probably seen Jenna several times on social media. She is very community-oriented, does a phenomenal job. Such a pleasure to have her. And so if you would, Alderman Timian, if you would come forward and read the oath of office to appoint her as a full-time police officer.
Just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jenna Robbins,
Senator Robbins,
having been newly appointed as a police officer for the city of Moline, Illinois,
newly appointed as a police officer for the city of Moline, Illinois,
do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois,
do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois,
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of police officer for the city of Moline, Illinois,
that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of police officer for the city of Moline, Illinois,
according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Can we give one now or can we just?
Yes, she can take hers right now.
Now, open her badge on, signify her position as a police officer. If you could just shake her once. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. One on board. And I won't steal it.
Congratulations.
And then the next oath of office we have is for Chris Mathias, who is returning to the city as Director of Community and Economic Development Director. Mr. Vitas.
Yes, it would be great, great pride, great pleasure to welcome Chris Mathias back to Team Moline. He spent a significant part of his early career here in Moline, did some wonderful work for us then. Left briefly to go over to Iowa and work at Scott County as their planning director. And I was really pleased in meeting with him that he still had an interest in being part of this great organization. And we're looking forward to all of his expertise and knowledge and institutional knowledge in particular to help us guide the CED department forward to greater things.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
I, Chris Mathias,
having been duly appointed to the position of Director of Community and Economic Development for the city of Moline, Illinois,
having been duly appointed to the position of Director of Community and Economic Development for the city of Moline, Illinois,
do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Illinois,
do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitutions of the United States and the state of Illinois,
will strictly adhere to the Illinois rule of professional conduct and the Moline Code of ordinances,
will strictly adhere to the Illinois Rules of Professional Conduct and the Moline Code of Ordinances,
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of Director of Community and Economic Development for the city of Moline, Illinois,
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of Director of Community and Economic Development for the city of Moline, Illinois,
according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Yeah, good idea.
Bob, would you like to be in a photo?
Sure, I'd love to.
Anyone else you would like?
Love it.
How about you?
Oh, that's the family.
I'm just a stand-in. And next we'll move on to board appointments. I'm appointing Chris Mathias to the Moline Center Main Street Commission as the city representative. And further, next we're on to proclamations. We have a proclamation of Nicolinas Turtle Company to declare the launch of the Skip the Plastic Campaign. I have asked Madam Clerk to read the proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas the city of Moline is committed to promoting sustainable practices, reducing plastic waste, and preserving the environment for present and future generations. And whereas single-use plastic straws and cutlery are among the most prevalent sources of plastic pollution, often ending up in landfills, oceans, and harming wildlife and ecosystems. And whereas the city of Moline recognizes the importance of proactive measures to address this issue. And whereas the Skip the Plastic Campaign created by Nicolina Pappas of Nicolinas Turtle Company aims to reduce the unnecessary use of single-use plastic straws and cutlery by promoting the practice of providing such items only upon customer request. And whereas Plastic Free July is a global movement aimed at raising awareness about the environmental impact of single-use plastics and encouraging individuals, businesses, and communities to adopt more sustainable alternatives. Now therefore, Sangeetha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, does hereby proclaim the launch of the Plastic, I'm sorry, the Skip the Plastic Campaign throughout the city of Moline to commence after Plastic Free July and continue as an ongoing campaign. She urges all residents, businesses, and visitors to join us in this effort to reduce plastic waste and protect our environment.
And I have a copy of the proclamation. We can present.
If you have any words for the council?
Mayor Raiapati, thank you so much for issuing this proclamation to support the Skip the Plastic Campaign. Moline is a conservation leader, is a conservation leader. Plastic is made from fossil fuels and does not decompose. It merely breaks down into small pieces called microplastics, which can be found everywhere in our environment. Plastic straws, forks, spoons, and every plastic straw, fork, spoon, and knife ever made are still in existence in some form today. By asking restaurants to only offer these items when requested, it encourages people to consider whether they truly need these items and reduces unnecessary waste. It will also be cost-saving for restaurants. Reducing plastic cutlery and straws isn't going to fix the plastic crisis, but it's an excellent start, one that is spreading throughout the Quad Cities. Thank you again for taking this important step.
Thank you. Next, we're on to questions of the agenda. On the agenda, I would like to mention that I removed item fifteen-five from the consent agenda for later, so that will be discussed individually after the consent agenda. Are there any other questions on the agenda tonight? If not, I did skip public comment, so let's go to that first. Now, this is an opportunity for public comment. I believe we have a few people here tonight. I will remind everyone speaking that we have a three-minute time limit, and the timer will be up here, and that this is not an opportunity for back and forth. This is simply an opportunity to be heard. The council will not directly respond to any questions, but we can follow up with you afterwards. So please make sure that your information is on the sign-in sheet so that we can appropriately do so. Chief?
Gerald Shelton.
Mr. Shelton?
Excuse me, can I, we need a comment from the mayor first before we begin?
Yeah, before we begin with public comment, we do have a public comment that was submitted via email from the mayor. So if you will, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Good evening, city council and members of the community. I regret that I am unable to be with you in person for tonight's meeting. I did want to take a moment to thank Alderman Timian for collaboratively working with me this past week to prepare for the meeting and for his efforts to speak with Boost awardees and staff to gain a clearer picture of everyone's perspectives. The only way we meet the needs of the public is with a team approach, and I'm pleased that this is the case on the elected as well as staff sides of our organization. This moment where we bring to fruition a major program made possible by the historic ARPA investments calls for a reminder to all of us, elected leaders and staff alike, that government is here to serve the public. We are here to listen, weigh our options, and make the best choices for this community that we can as we balance competing priorities for limited dollars. Sometimes that means our answers will not please everyone, but it is what we are tasked with. Thank you to all who are committed to this work this evening. I look forward to being with you again next week and sharing valuable information I've learned at the Edgar Fellows Program as it pertains to the work we are doing in the state of Illinois and in our community. Mayor Raiapati.
Thank you. Mr. Sheldon?
Good evening. So my name is Gerald. I own a subway here in Quad Cities in Moline, Walmart, and my company, G Shelton Foods LLC, applied for the Boost funding program as I would like to purchase the location up here on Nineteenth and reopen it and get it back going. I think it's a good opportunity. I signed up for the program, thought it was a great idea because it was getting a chance to get money for something that I knew if I went to the bank, they would tell me no because the location had been closed. So I was shocked when, you know, it said fifty thousand dollars was what the general assistance was, and that's what it said on the website. That's what it said at the kickoff meeting. That's what it said everywhere else. Luckily, I got it approved in July, and I got a call and said I was, you know, earmarked for the full amount. Imagine my surprise when the Facebook post comes out and it says that, you know, I was only awarded thirty-five thousand dollars. I hadn't been given any kind of notification from the city of Moline or anybody else. It just randomly appeared on the website. Thought that was not the greatest thing in the world to do. I understand it's public money. It's going to have to be, you know, shown to people what it is, and that's great. That's good. I'm all right with that. I don't mind that people know that we got it, but something didn't, doesn't make sense here because I was told that number, and then we had a Zoom meeting that twenty awardees had been given a task to fill out a budget and for the amounts that we had submitted. So I submitted that budget with that amount in mind, and then all of a sudden, you know, there's ten more new awardees the next month, and now the funding's been cut in half. I'm still going to make the project work. I'm appreciative of the city and everybody for going through with this project and making it happen. I think it'll be a good thing. However, just feel like, you know, it's misled that it was going to be one thing, and it's not. And I'm not the only one that's had this problem. There's others that have had this happen as well. And I don't know if it's miscommunication or what it was, but even to this day, on the website, does not say up to fifty thousand. It just says fifty thousand. Also, I noticed in the awards that not one person, nowhere, got anywhere near the max amount. Not one, none. How does that happen? What did I do on my application that I would have had to have done to get to that amount? I would love to see what I should have done different or what I need to do to make that happen. My request from you guys is hopefully, maybe you guys would see it in your heart to go through and try to get some more funding together and make the people that were, you know, told that they were going to get this money to get it back up to the right amount so these businesses can succeed and not fail. I will make it work. I'll do it, but there's a lot of businesses that, you know, needed that whole funding amount to make it happen, and I feel sorry for them because they're not going to get a chance to necessarily make it through with what they're needing to be.
Thank you.
Yep.
Tim McGuire.
Mr. McGuire?
Hello. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us today. My name is Tim McGuire. I'm the CEO and Chairman of Wild Cherry Spoon Company. If you do not know of us, we are mostly famous for, we've been in the Wall Street Journal. It featured a few of our products. We've attended large events like the Kris Kimmel Market in Chicago and in front of Wrigley Stadium. And we were very, very excited to be awarded the Boost program. I'm going to start off because I think there's a misconception among some of you that I don't like the program or I'm criticizing it. It is a fabulous program, and it's a program you guys need to fund more. You know, it will fund a retail business renaissance. You guys will make Moline shine in the Midwest if you do. So my story and the facts and what we all experienced is I personally attended the April Boost Workshop Saturday, April twenty-second. In the meeting, it was conveyed that at the end of each month's applications, they would be reviewed and approved. In the following month, those funds would be awarded until they were exhausted. At the meeting, I had asked specifically, how long will it take for the funds to be dispersed from approval to check? Weeks or months? Moline's staff responded that they were working on a couple of things, but that it would take weeks and not months. That was in April. We applied. We were among the May designees. It's apparent that the Boost Committee did not follow its own stated protocols of awarding and dispersing funds. As applications rolled in and instead waited until some previously undisclosed number of applicants had been achieved. This created a situation as we have documentation of four separate instances where the amount awarded was either expressly given to applicants or heavily implied. One of these is on May sixteenth, I received a phone call from KJ at Moline notifying me of my acceptance and that an award letter would go out next week, a letter we still have not received. In that call, I asked how much we would be awarded, thinking that us opening up a new downtown retail store would get us ten thousand dollars. I was mistaken on that. I said sixty-five K, and to which she replied, no, fifty thousand dollars base with five thousand additional if we hired and retained five additional employees for six months. On several occasions, Moline's consultant interviewed with myself and other businesses to try to figure out bridge funding until Boost was actually delivered. In these calls with other businesses, they expressed worry that they would be ineligible for various reasons for outside funding, to which the consultant responded, quote, "You will look more eligible with fifty K on the way." On July thirteenth-
I'm sorry, the three minutes for the, the time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alexis Edmonds.
Hello. My name is Alexis Edmonds. We operate a remodeling company located on Sixteenth Street. My experience with the Boost program has been good up until August first, I believe, the Facebook post went out. I've had good communication with KJ and Tara throughout this whole process. I was one of the very first people to apply to this program. I was awarded, I had my application in at the end of March and was awarded in April. I was one of four awarded. I was part of the guinea pigs. I was the test group. I'm the only reason why that application got off the ground because the day that things were due on the thirty-first, you couldn't even submit the application. For example, enter your legal business name, and you can't move forward in the application without filling in that box. You put in your legal business name, Patco Design, Inc., and it tells you that the, it's not a valid email address. That is one example. There, I have five other, but I only have three minutes. I communicated with KJ and Tara, worked through it. They responded quickly. Everything was great. They got it up and running. We got our application in on the last day. I got an email from KJ saying that we were approved for funding. And in throughout many face-to-face conversations, I bet I've been down here five or six times, and we were told, I said, well, how much can we, you know, you're trying to budget. When will we get the money? When does this happen? We were told sixty thousand. We're on an impacted corridor. We're the general fund. There's all this. We were awarded. My question to you is, I don't even know who's on the committee because that has changed so much. Who is on the Boost Committee? That is a question I have. The other question is, where is my scoring rubric? How did I not qualify? I did everything right. I jumped through all of the hoops. They sent out things, do this. It's got the wrong years on it. So then you do it for a whole year that's not even relevant. They actually wanted it for twenty-three and twenty-four. Throughout the whole process, communicating with the, with the consultant, the consultant would say one thing, and the city would say another. Trust but verify was my life for three months. Getting up at 5:00 AM, going into my office, preparing everything, getting everything together. How is it fair that I went through all of this and did every, jumped through every hoop and hurt someone that applied in July that all they did was submit an application? I know people that are in those ten other businesses that didn't even submit a budget. How is that fair? How is that fair? It was never presented as a fair. If that was the case, it should have been, we are going to award thirty businesses X dollars. Never eighty thousand and first come, first served. That is how it was presented.
Thank you. Your three minutes is up.
Richard Patterson. Good evening. My name is Richard Patterson. I own and operate Patco Design on Sixteenth Street in Moline. And to echo my wife, our experience with the Boost program in the beginning was very good, and we were very excited about the program. However, the Boost program was presented to us as more of a competition than a, a act in fairness. You know, we went to the kickoff event, and we were suggested that we go home that night and start to get our SAMs number. I'm sure most of you know what that is. And we did. We went home that night, and we got right on it, and we worked diligently, and we were one of the first people to get our application turned in, and that we were one of the first four approved. And the way it was presented to us is that this was a first-come, first-served basis. So we wanted to get in. We wanted the funding. We wanted to grow our business here in Moline. I didn't have to move my business to Moline. I had a perfectly good spot in East Moline where I live, but we like Moline. So we moved here, and we wanted to be part of the Boost, and we wanted to grow our business. So we got approved in April, and then we expected the funds to be released because that's what we were told. It would take a few weeks and the funds would be released. That was four months ago, and we were notified of our award on Facebook. We weren't emailed. We weren't called. We were notified via Facebook, and I just happened to be scrolling through at the end of the day and find it. We attended a Zoom meeting July thirteenth with twenty other businesses where we were told that we were earmarked for the full amount. And when you tell a business owner that they've been earmarked for the full amount, you assume that you are getting the general fund, fifty thousand dollars, and that we're on an impacted corridor. That would be an extra ten. So we are expecting sixty thousand dollars. Come to find out, we're only getting thirty-five thousand. Now, we are grateful for the thirty-five thousand, but I would like to know where the communication was lost. I want to know, why were there ten other businesses added after you had a Zoom meeting with twenty awardees, and you're telling them they're all earmarked for the full amount? Fifty thousand times twenty is a million dollars. You had one million, one hundred and ten thousand dollars in the fund. So when you tell twenty businesses they're getting the full amount, I assume everybody's getting fifty thousand plus impacted corridor money, employee retention money. I just, we would like some answers here. And we feel like you guys have kind of stepped back away since all this has happened, and you're not answering our questions. We feel deceived. We feel like there's some incompetence here that's not being, there's no accountability for it. I mean, there are twenty other businesses that I've talked to. They are all very upset about this. They feel like they've been misled.
Thank you. Your three minutes is up.
Moline.
Good evening. I am also one of the Boost awardees who was explicitly told in no uncertain terms that I was approved for fifty thousand dollars for my business. There was not an up to, a maybe, anything, and it was said multiple times across multiple conversations. Those are verbal, so I can't prove them. So I'm going to talk about what I can. Two weeks ago, the original twenty awardees were asked to submit our final expenditures detailing our planned use of funds, using numbers based on the full amount that we applied for. I know for certain that this was the amount that we were told to plan for in these expenditures because I had to do mine twice. Once, when some of my, some of my information didn't save to the spreadsheet, so it was missing. And again, when a single cell of the spreadsheet had been formatted incorrectly, and they asked me to make sure I got that fixed. So I find it very hard to believe that if my expenditures were not supposed to total fifty thousand dollars, that they evaluated this spreadsheet so closely that they noticed that a single cell was formatted incorrectly, and my budget, that was twenty-five thousand dollars over budget, or it would have been if I was supposed to receive twenty-five thousand instead of fifty, that they didn't bring that up twice. I don't know why Boost would have awardees compose detailed breakdowns for a specific amount of money if it was not the amount that we were slated to receive. These expenditures were due just two weeks before the public announcement, and we were told that they were going to be used to report, to report to the federal government how money was being spent. That does not sound hypothetical to me. One of the major qualifications or criteria for qualification for this program was need. So that means that a lot of these businesses have demonstrated that they, that this wouldn't just be nice for them. They need this money. This was going to save mine. Sorry. I would just ask that you would please let that sit in your heart for a minute and think about the joy that all of those business owners received or experienced, all of the massive relief, and then how that felt when it all got stripped away. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, I will go back to questions on the agenda if there are any, just so we can stay in order. Not, let's move on to item eight point one. As a resolution approving the special event application for QC Crime Stoppers five K event scheduled Saturday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, that is sponsored by the Quad City Crime Stoppers and closing certain streets, more particularly described herein to vehicular traffic. and closing certain streets more particularly described here into vehicular traffic.
Yes, this is an annual event and as you know, the city is celebrating the Mo Live event on that same day. And this is scheduled to occur along River Drive and through the general vicinity of downtown and we're recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman, Alder Person Schmidt, second by Castro. All in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, you're right. I apologize. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item 8.2, a resolution approving the special event application for the Walk to End Alzheimer's event scheduled Saturday, October 7, 2023, that is sponsored by the Alzheimer's Association and closing certain streets more particularly described here to vehicular traffic.
Yes, this is another annual event that's taking place downtown and it will require temporary closure of River Drive and First Street and usage of the Great River Trail between 5:30 and 11:45. We're recommending approval of this event as well and a closure.
Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
And a second? A motion by Alder Person Finch, second by Razak. Any discussion? Hearing none, all approved?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item 8.3, an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 4 alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances to be more business-friendly and to streamline the liquor licensing procedure, Ms. Castopolis.
Thank you. So again, on Chapter 4, which we do love to amend, we did find maybe a housekeeping issue that we thought deserved correction, especially as we approach renewal. And that is, as you likely saw in your agenda, we are recommending the elimination of the Class EE license. And the EE license currently is for out-of-city catering. Now, that will become the Class E license. And the current Class E license, which is in-city catering business, will become an option to elect and purchase with your other license such as an A or a B so that in-city businesses who also want to cater will already have an A or a B primarily. And rather than purchase another license to cater, we're suggesting that that opportunity be offered as an option as opposed to a separate liquor license. And then, of course, the out-of-city caterers will still purchase a license, it will just be an E as opposed to an EE.
Good job.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Alderman, Alder Person Schmidt, second by Castro. Discussion, Alder Person Schmidt?
I'm a second in.
Oh, second by Finch, I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you. So for a business, is it easier to apply for an option as opposed to a second license? Because I know, I mean, the fee structure was retained. So I'm just trying to understand what the advantage or why that move.
Right, well, it's, so applying for an option is different than a license and we felt to go through the entire application process again for a separate liquor license and again, go through all of those requirements, which are, you know, somewhat burdensome, rightly so. It would be more appropriate if they were simply an option as opposed to a second license.
Because an entire, the license is more complicated than applying for an option.
Right.
And they've already done all those hoops we've asked you.
Right.
Okay, perfect.
So if a caterer is only a caterer and it doesn't have a restaurant or a hotel, is that a separate license then?
It's License E or for in-city.
If it's an in-city caterer that doesn't have a restaurant and serve the public.
I'm going to defer to Madam Clerk.
So we don't have any that are actually like that. They would be given a different classification of license. They would either be Class A on-premise conception. Conception. Sorry. Consumption. So they would already have some other license. And so we realized after we had done kind of that overhaul, those classifications, reducing the options from, we had 10, down to three. When we got to renewal, we realized that we didn't want anybody to have a secondary license. We wanted them just to have an additional option. Should have been written that way to begin with. This is just a little cleanup.
And I have a question as well. You mentioned primarily A and B. Does that mean there is a world in which a gas station could apply for this option?
No.
No.
Okay, so we're really just talking about A and B?
Gas stations are Class C and they are not eligible.
Not eligible for these options.
Right. Has to be on premises.
Ms. Schmidt? I'm sorry, following up from Ms. Castro's question, but, so I understand you just saying that we do not currently have any caterers who are not also operating as a restaurant, but wouldn't this change preclude us from ever having one and then obtaining a liquor license?
It seems to me that any of them that would be within the city and had a brick and mortar.
But they wouldn't need to, to be a functioning caterer. Not a, not one that would ever have consumption on premises, certainly.
They've always had to and I suppose, I mean, we just don't have that. So what we could do is add Option 4 and leave Option E just in case? I'm sorry, not Option License E. We could leave that license. We don't have any that fit that right now, but we definitely need the option to add that. I understand what you're saying. So we could take this back and, or you could make an amendment to leave the options, I'm sorry, the classifications as they are and simply add Option 4, catering.
Because, I mean, because we're reading that correctly, that it would not allow that one type of business to operate that. But I think we definitely want to leave that option available.
Ms. Castopolis?
So I would suggest that we, in that case, to preserve that, perhaps the Class E would be in-city or out-of-city catering-only license.
And would that mean, because currently an in-city caterer would have a different fee structure, but that was always assuming it was a secondary license.
Correct.
And so the out-of-city is actually more in line with an appropriate licensure cost. So it really is just a caterer's registration.
Right.
Like, doesn't matter where it's from. Would I be able at this point to make a generic motion at the Cow? Because I'm sure that's going to impact language in several places. So I would make, I'll let you speak before I make an amendment.
Yes, you can make a generic amendment. And again, our goal was to eliminate that double license fee and process.
So I would make a motion to update this ordinance to allow for an in-city catering business to also apply for that Class E.
Motion by Alder Person Schmidt.
Second.
Second by Castro.
Good catch.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That amendment passes, so back to the original motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of this amended motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. And I will move on to informational. 9.1, August status and informational report, Mr. Vitas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protimian and members of council. As you know, we routinely introduce the monthly status and information report to report back on the work of all departments across the city. And in the memo of August 4th to the council, you can see the large number of ongoing projects and programs that have been started and completed here in the city. And rather than go through each and every one of them, if there's any questions ever, I'm always available to answer those as well as the directors who actually assist in preparing this report. Just a few things to point out, of course. The annual TIF reports were completed. That is required by state law. The Community Development Block grant single audit was also completed by community economic development. Again, with timely deadlines. Of course, for those of you who were here or weren't here, the GFA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award to the Finance Department, award to finance based upon just an outstanding job of providing a transparent and understandable budget document for the general public. Of course, you're aware of the fact that we brought on the new CED director as well as the, next Monday, the city clerk will be starting her employment with the city as well. So we're able to get those positions filled quickly and I think that speaks well for the candidates as well as for the city. The class and comp study, of course, which was a 12, 10-month process is now concluded as well as the public works actual organizational assessment. So rather than go through all of them, those are just some of the larger, larger projects that took months on end actually to complete, in some cases nearly a year. So if there's any questions, always happy to answer those.
Are there any questions tonight? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Vitas.
Thank you.
9.2, rental housing program, Mr. Daley. Do you have an update on that?
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, be able to talk about our rental program and where we'd like to see it go in the future. Again, our rental housing program is multiple parts to it. Again, the ordinance itself is something that we've been working on for the last year, putting together, and it's just about done. We just need to fine tune a couple of fine points and it'll be ready to move and that's part of why we're here tonight is to get your input. Vacation rental units, that is something that's underway right now as the finance has been working with a developer to find out where these are and to get them registered and to start keeping track of those. And then also, we're working on a vacant property registration and Vitas and Barry have been working hard on coming up with a private firm to help alleviate those issues for the city. So a little house, a little history on the housing program, okay? The rental housing program was, it started as far as inspections in 2007, but actually we started licensing properties all the way back to 2004 and that was just being done by finance and there were not inspections being, occurring at that time. Then originally, it was managed through the legal department. It was the inspection of two unit above multifamily properties, rental properties. At the time personnel, we had a rental housing coordinator slash FOIA officer and rental housing inspector slash lead inspector doing the work. The program changed in 2018 upon the retirement of the rental inspector. Then all inspections were taken over by the fire department and they, again, were responsible for inspecting, but they were fired. They were inspecting for fire code compliance. They were looking at it through their eyes, not as a building inspector's eyes. The rental inspector sent out a combined fire, property maintenance letter to the owners to let them know what the issues were and then that's kind of where things ended. And also, at that time, single-family residential residences were not included in our rental program. Recent history, as is talked about, the fire department inspects all rental units, two units and above. The neighborhood improvement program absorbed into the public works. No rental housing inspections were done except on a complaint basis. And then, of course, it was become a council strategic goal is to expand to single-family residential rentals and that's why we're hoping to push it forward today. So the current status and implementation. The rental housing coordinator position was created in fiscal year '23. Rental housing inspection positions are hoping to be filled, two in fiscal year '24 and two in fiscal year '25. Kind of a phased-in approach. The plan calls for the fire department to still inspect rental housing complexes with 11 or more units for fire safety, but the inspector or the building division would still inspect them for code compliance with the building codes and the property maintenance codes. The plan calls for the building division to inspect the single-family and all multifamily units so that way we can make sure that all rental units are being looked at, that they are made safe. The rental housing program ordinance at a glance is proposed ordinance changes added inspections to single-family rental, residential rental properties, added section for updated fees and penalties, added inspections due to probable cause and complaints, and change from a registration to license with penalties and revocation. So we started with license, we went to registration, and we'd like to go back to license again because it has a little more bite. Also, all the other communities that have rental programs here in the Quad Cities, they all have licenses. Program recommendation for staffing, again, to have, we have a position for a rental housing coordinator to end up adding four rental housing inspectors, as I spoke about, two in fiscal year '24 and two in '25. And then administrative assistant, that would be something to be determined later. With that many staff members, it's going to be more efficient having somebody taking care of the paperwork that is administratively minded. So allowing the inspectors to be on the street as much as possible. Some of the program requirements, of course, is that we're going to be looking at new software, which is, we've already determined and we have it ordered, so that's coming here in the near future. Vehicles, we have worked with the finance department and with Sarah Marks at Fleet and she's reserving vehicles for us so that way we will have those. And of course, we still need the laptops, tablets, and other electronic devices to do the work. So here's the big part. So we're looking at costs and expenses, revenues and fees. So we are looking at increasing our licensing fee to $100 for per unit or per registrate or per license there, let me get that right, and $15 per unit. We figure that we approximately have 4,500 single-family rentals in the Moline area. Now, that is from the Realtors Association and other sources that we can find. We do not actually have good hard data on that. The multifamily, we know what we have and we know what we've been working with. There's 650 multifamily properties now. And then the multifamily rentals, again, that was by a calculation of the number of properties and the number of units, approximately that's it. And that's where the five And that's where the 572,720. Now, let's go to the staffing and cost. So in 2023, rental coordinator, personnel cost of 77,462. Our other expenses is $8,700, that's all the things that they need to get up and running, the car expense beyond the car itself, but gas and everything to go along with it, plus all the notices sent out, et cetera. We also put in here the fire department's expenses for what they're going to be doing as inspecting the 11 and higher unit facilities for fire, that's built into here. Also, we have built into this is the finance department cost. Finance department puts out the licenses and takes in the fees, puts out the licenses and the renewal notices, and they track it, so that's where those costs come from. So we're looking at, you know, a cost of about $103,000 this year. Next year with two inspectors, $323,875. And then in year three, which would be 2025, for $506,257, which is, again, we're a little strong on the, on the fee side, but yet we're hoping for 100%. So we know there's going to be some, you know, getting the people in, finding these rental units, and getting them used to getting on board, paying and such. So, so we think that it's going to progress to that point, and the numbers are going to work out as we get further into this. And also, that's why we're progressing with staffing, so that way we're not overstaffing at the beginning when we don't have the revenues at all. So we try to put a thoughtful approach into it. Talking about revenue, of course, the main source of revenue is license registrations, other revenues including reinspection fees and other charges, as well as court post fines are minimal. Yeah, so what are we about? We're about trying to get compliance. So we, we do everything we can to try to push the landlords to become compliant, and sometimes we are forced to take them to court. And at that point, we levy the fees and we, again, hold them accountable for paying them. But overall, in the grand scheme of things, that sum of money isn't a huge pot, so. And then also, that fees are established based on the cost to provide inspection services. So basically, we want to pay as you go program, so that way, again, that revenues and fees balance out. Okay, so our pathway to a meaningful change. We're looking for a program manager, four inspectors, and an administrative support person to staff the program, and that would be between fiscal year 23 to 25. Dedicated funding to sustain the program fiscal year 23 and beyond. A team approach that will encompass multiple city departments, because you know what? No one can do a heavy lift all by themselves. It takes, it takes a lot of friends, and that's why it's going to take a lot of people working with us to get our rental stock up to the high quality that it should be. We're going to be building partnerships, of course, with other, other sectors and nonprofits in the community that might be able to help with some of these things, and explore public-private partnerships with lenders maybe that can help some of these landlords that, that maybe they can't afford it. You know, the, the parents that have this rental property as their retirement fund, and they've been sucking the money out and just having to have the money to put back in, maybe we can help them get it back to where they really wish it was. And then, of course, explore federal and state grant opportunities to improve it. So. So what we are looking for from the council is your desire to move forward with the personnel described in the presentation, and acknowledge the fees that will be needed to be increased for the staffing levels needed to make a substantial improvement for the city. These new inspectors will be responsible for code enforcement matters and improving our housing stock as a whole. The changing of the registration of rental properties to licensing over the, over registration, giving us a little more bite there to be able to, to push the bad characters to do better. And of course, adding single-family housing, so that way there's a sector that isn't falling underneath that we aren't catching. So, thank you, everyone, and I appreciate any comments.
I have one for you before anyone else. You mentioned compliance, and I'm looking at this number of single-family, 4,500 estimate. Getting that launched and, and getting all of those properties to be compliant will be a major lift.
Yes.
And, and I know that long-term it might not be, but the initial push will be. I wonder if code enforcement might require extra help for that as well, or what the plan is for that?
And that, that's a good point. And, and some of that, we've already started to look at and address. We've hired another combination inspector because of the incredible workload we've had this year with the storm coming through and such. Also, we have some really big projects on the horizon, and of course, that's going to be staffing also. And we also realize that, just like you said, that with each one of these, with every window that has to be replayed, somebody's going to have to go out there and make sure it's done right. So by bringing up that staffing level, we're hoping that it's going to help with that. And again, I know Bob always feels it's important to monitor the levels of how things are going, so that's how we're kind of addressing it.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions, Mr. Schmidt?
Yep. So as we look forward, and I recognizing as Armitain was saying that there's going to be some ramp up, period, do we anticipate that number of inspectors will be able to complete all of these inspections on a weekly basis or on a yearly basis?
How, actually, how our program works is that there's an initial inspection done, and from that, right now, we do an exterior inspection, and we, and the, and the rental unit is graded. An A unit is great shape, right? And we put that on a four-year cycle. So we won't come back to it again for four years because, hey, this owner's done a fantastic job. Then we have ourselves a B units, and the B units are the ones that, hey, you know, we went there and we see you have a rip screen and a couple of your downspouts are knocked off and maybe some chipping paint, and we go, okay, get this fixed, and we see you do a pretty good job, and we put you on a two-year basis, so we aren't re-inspecting it every, every year. And then the ones that we have that are the most challenged ones, we put those on a yearly basis, because again, until we can get them up to that A level, that we want to keep our , our kind of eyes on them.
So in that standpoint, from a long-term, that means our revenues are not going to keep up with our expenses?
Well, the hope is, is that we get through the multifamily by the, probably the middle of next year, we've already got to start on that, and then start phasing into single-family there. And at that point, we have the three inspectors, and that's where we'll kind of get that started and get the ball rolling, and then add in the two other inspectors, and then we'll have all five inspectors. And by that time, we're hoping that, you know, by the time that we get through that third year cycle, that then we're starting to roll over on, onto some of these other properties again that, that are going to be coming back to us.
But we're looking at a line that says projected revenue of 450,000, but that's what, going to be a third of that a year?
I think that the, the fees are yearly, the inspections are every four.
Correct.
For the Class A.
Right.
It's a license fee.
Not an inspection fee.
Not an inspection fee, but then, very good. Inspector, so, and, so when we decide you need to be inspected more often, you're not paying more for your licensing fee, unless it's the, the re-inspection.
Right.
Okay. That makes sense.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That was my question, was it licensing versus inspection? It's a exact same question.
And, and basically, again, looking back to where we were at the beginning, was there were, we were just licensing and there were no inspections back in 2004. So again, we're, we're moving things forward.
Well, I just want to say, nice job with this. I know it's been talked about for some time, and I really like what you have put together, especially the offsetting it with the licensing fees on there. That's really a direction that we have been wanting to go towards with, with, basically to pay for some of the services that we offer, so thank you.
With this being a new program, what, and obviously, this will come out with the ordinance, what happens when property owners refuse to participate?
Well, that's always a point. And that's where we have a municipal court system that we can take them to, and we can find them. And we can find them up to $750 a day.
Okay.
So that, that's where our bite is, and yeah.
And so the idea is that they either comply, or if this is too burdensome, maybe they can sell the property and get it off of the rental market, and that benefits new homeowners as well.
Exactly. The other one to that is if they decide not to pay the fines, then we'll, we'll put a lien against them. We'll, we'll look at, at the property if, if it needs to find you ownership, so we have recourse.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Would you remind me what the current registration fee is? And then, just remind me what those are?
Our current fee is very unusual, okay? And it's by groupings, and, and so I do not have that, I should have, I have all the thing here right on me, but it, it basically is, for like, under five units, it's like $50. If it's from like five to like 11, it's, I believe it's like $100, and then if you have like over 11 units or something like that, it's, it's like 150.
And there's nothing for single unit, correct?
Actually, and, and here's probably even a better way of looking at that, is when I calculated out where we were, optimally with just the multifamily, the way we are now, that the maximum we could bring in is 42,000 a year, which doesn't even come close to covering an inspector. And that's with optimum, us getting everybody into compliance, which we know there's going to be a percentage that, that's not going to pay, we got to chase them.
No, and, and I think it, even with those, those increases in fees as they come, that's going to be a big step forward to allow us to help protect the residents of Moline and those building owners who may not realize they have a problem on their hand, but by having those periodic inspections, I think that'll be helpful as well, so excited to see it move forward.
Are there any other questions on this item? Thank you very much, Mr. Daly. We will now move on to the Moline, the council meeting. I now call the City of Moline Council Meeting of August 8th, 2023 to order. Please stand if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance, to apply on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Elder Person Schmidt, do you have an indication?
Nope.
All right. Madam Clerk, if you please take roll.
Elder Person Murphy.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
O'Brien. Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
And I request approval of Committee of the Whole Council in executive session minutes of July 25th, 2023, and appointments made during Committee of the Whole on August 8th, 2023, and consent agenda items 15.1 through 15.4 inclusively.
Do you have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Elder Person Finch.
Second.
Second by Castro. Roll call, please.
Elder Person Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Non-consent agenda, second reading ordinances.
Oh, there was the 15.5, or is that?
15.5 is one that moved.
I know, okay, so I thought that would be right after.
That goes to not.
Understood.
Yeah, thank you. Item 17.1 is a zoning text amendment ordinance amending Chapter 35 zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances regarding minimum off-street parking and traffic circulation standards for in-vehicle sales and service uses.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion by Elder Person Schmidt, second by Finch, Mr. Schmidt?
I, we had discussed at our previous meeting that this has not been through in its current form to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and some of the changes of that final version, particularly in the drive-throughs, I think, I just have concerns about whether they're all what's right for our community, and I really want to have the opportunity for that board to weigh in. Very supportive of the parking lot requirement and wanted to see that move forward, but with that all said, I'd like to make a motion to send this back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their advice, or for their review, and the option to do an additional public hearing if they so see fit.
A motion to return to Plan Commission, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Finch, roll call, please, or discussion on the amendment, or the, it's not an amendment, it's just a motion to return to Plan Commission. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Elder Person Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. And then the motion, we have a motion as second as amended, and we'll have a roll call on that.
I'm a little, there was a little, this was double motion, I, I question if this was topless.
So the motion that to return it to.
That's all we need.
Yeah.
Superceded.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, then we have item 17.2, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances, increasing the number of Class C licenses in the city at the request of Nishan One Incorporated, doing business as Nishan Food Mart.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Elder Person Finch.
Second.
Second by Macias, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Elder Person Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Item 17.3, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 cable video service provider fee and customer protection of the Moline Code of Ordinances, by repealing Chapter 30 in its entirety and acting in lieu thereof, one new Chapter 30 dealing with the same subject matter.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Finch.
Second.
Second by Razak. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Elder Person Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Item 15.5, a resolution approving the Business Owner Occupied Stabilization Transformation Boost Program loan agreement, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to said agreement with the attached list of eligible Moline small businesses to utilize funds distributed through the Business Owner Occupied Stabilization Transformation Program under the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Elder Person Razak, who's your second?
Second.
Second by Macias, discussion. I can start off. I, I wanted to mention, I spoke to a number of the awardees, and some of them spoke tonight. It, it became very clear that there were miscommunicated expectations with this program. There were timelines that changed that were not also communicated, and it is, and some of these were informal communications that were not official, that were perhaps premature. And this is unfortunate, and I would understand why any business would be frustrated by this. And for those communication issues, I do apologize, I would be equally frustrated. And these are things that we can work on internally to make sure that they don't happen again with future. to make sure that they don't happen again with future programs. But speaking with both awardees and city staff, I can assure that there was no mal-intent. That this was all, in, in some ways, the program was a victim of its own success with just the number of applicants and just the amount of attention it got. So I, I do apologize personally for any hurt feelings and frankly disappointments that resulted in this. But I still contend that I believe that the program was a success. And we were able to help 30 businesses that desperately needed the money. And for that, I'm proud. But I am, again, sorry for any miscommunications that happened as a result of process. And, and I, I do hope that we will do better in the future. Anyone, Mr. Macias?
Yes, thank you. I actually was on the selection committee. And I recused myself from scoring because there were so many business owners that I personally knew. So I, I recused myself. But I was part of the process and, and having all the, we had volunteers, city staff and myself and they're just, and a consultant going through this thing. And there was a lot of applicants that could really use the amount. When we decided to give to more applicants to make a bigger impact, it was because of some of the same things that, the sentiments of how can we help more? How can we, how, how can we make it so that we get the most out of this? It was never again with mal-intention and it was always to make a bigger impact. I do have no doubt that there were some recipients that would be very successful even without the grants. They were just some that had excellent presentations. And I was impressed at some of the presentations that they had and their documents. But as the judges and, and as people were deciding, we also know that there was a need. There was a huge need. There was a lot of businesses that could really benefit from it. A lot of small business owners in Moline. So as the winner pool was expanded, we basically, the, the panel looked at all those businesses and their plans. Not so much what are those communications like? We didn't get into that. We just knew that everybody was going to be communicated. So to, to your point, yeah, I, I, I really, looking back, feel like we could have done a better job, whoever communicated, with the, with the applicants. But really, when you go back to the initial presentation here and at Western Illinois, they're really, specifically, it was said we cannot guarantee funding on the applicants on the presentations. In many instances, it was mentioned up to a predetermined amount. So again, if anybody misspoke or, or maybe the expectations were not properly set, we're sorry about that. I feel we could have done a better job communicating with the recipients. Now, again, with some of the, I do want to be clear with some of the recipients. These are forgivable loans. It's not necessarily just a grant. And there are specific reporting parameters that, and requirements. A loan is a liability. Even after those checks are made, there are things that need to be reported to fulfill those business goals. And, and I, I do want to mention that just, I, I, I hope that anybody who feels that it was unjust or it's going to be a bigger burden, there is plenty of other businesses out there that wish they would be in, in this place. And, and we really wanted to help just about everybody. So again, everything was done with all the best intention. You know, it, it was a good thing that, that, that we're doing for our businesses. These, these funds are from ARPA. These are not the city taxpayers that, that are putting this money up. So because it was, it's a one-time thing and also because it's not something that's going to be coming all the time from the federal government, I really feel like we, we did a good job with, as far as making a bigger impact with a lot of businesses. And I, again, I'm sorry that it was communicated and the expectations weren't met with some of the folks. But I, I think we're going to make a big impact on all of those that are receiving funds. And if anybody wants to talk to me afterwards, I'd be happy to talk to them. But many people would be so happy to get even a fraction of what was given out there because there was a lot of businesses that had the need, bigger needs, and a lot of businesses that just didn't have the presentations and some of the, the, really the, the things that were asked for with this, with this program. So again, sorry if the communications weren't the best.
Anyone else have anything? Mr. Schmidt?
You know, voting to, I'm, I'll be voting tonight to move forward and, and with the awards because I think there's something that's been held up and, and not gone at the pace we've ever wanted it to. And I think it's important that we make sure that that gets followed through and goes quickly. In the last week, learning about the challenges and the changes and some of, and seeing communications and, and understanding and learning how that process has happened because I've not been a part of it. It's been really disappointing and really frustrating to see how it has played out. I think it's completely understandable to see why so many business owners had an impression. And, and I am, I wish that we could figure out how to expand this program, to build this out. And, and maybe there is, is an opportunity in, in the future. But you know, right now, we, we had brought this money together for an identified need from various things in ARPA. This was, we took everything that was left and kind of put this together as that last program we added. And I'm glad we'll be able to move forward with it. And I just do apologize to anyone who has had challenges, has had frustration through this process. I think this is something the city will be learning from going forward and we just want to keep doing better. I know we've all wanted to do our best and that has always been the intention. And I hope we can live up to that as we move forward.
Any other comments in the council? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Elder Person Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Item 18.1, resolution accepting the employee classification and compensation study prepared for the City of Moline by Evergreen Solutions LLC dated August 1st, 2023, and directing the city administrator and staff to prepare the necessary documents to implement the study's findings and recommendations for employees not within any bargaining unit and to use said findings and recommendations as the basis for bargaining with the various exclusive bargaining agents for the others, for other city employees.
For item 18.1, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Elder Person Finch.
Second.
Second by Murphy. Discussion, please. Mr. Vitas, you have anything to add on this one?
Well, I know I've spoken to quite a few of you over the last several days and this is not the first time we've discussed it. But I guess just to summarize for purposes of the record, this was about a 12-month, well, 11-month project that we started quite a long time ago. It was really brought about really to address wage, wage concerns and discrepancies through the years, going back to the previous study nearly five years ago, and trying to find a way to bring about a resolution to those conflicts because there were plentiful. And we've struggled, you know, through the years to try and manage the old plan and multiple pay plans even for the same bargaining unit. And, and this brings us to the conclusion of that entire debate, that entire process. So we're recommending that the Employee Classification and Compensation Study as prepared by Evergreen Solutions LLC actually is approved this evening because it is a major part of the fiscal '24 budget process that we're underway with today. There's nothing in the study that has changed since the time it was actually discussed or presented to you. What was provided on Friday with the release of the agenda basically covers the job classification plan literally from the Assistant City Administrator, Police Chief and Fire Chief, all the way down to the custodian, representing every employee in the organization, every job description and with compensation plans also that correlate to not only the non-union, but the four bargaining units as well. So that being said, if there's any other questions, Leah is here as well. If not, we would recommend approval of the Classification Compensation Study.
Are there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Elder Person Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Item 18.2, a resolution directing the city administrator to modify the non-union employee group salary plan to incorporate the changes set forth on Exhibit A attached here too relating to the adoption and implementation of the Evergreen Solutions LLC Employee Classification and Compensation Plan. Motion to approve.
Is that a motion by Castro?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Finch.
Second.
Second by Castro.
Thank you.
You want any comment on this?
I would love some comment.
Okay, Mayor, Protown and Council. This represents one of the five pay plans contained within the Classification and Compensation Study. This one specifically rates relates to the non-union employee group salary plan. And we're recommending approval of that plan as prepared by Evergreen for inclusion in our work going forward with the fiscal '24 budget and beyond for purposes of compensation to the non-union employees. It would be effective on October the 1st. If sufficient funds were budgeted with the anticipation that this project would have been done even earlier and implemented perhaps even earlier. But that is, that is where we are. We're looking at an October 1 implementation for this particular plan. And then hopefully with the conclusion of negotiations with the American Federation State County Municipal Employees Bargaining Unit, that, that would all go into effect as well. Depending on negotiations, had a date to be determined. But that affected January 1, 2024, the plans would go into effect. And it would, of course, then be subject to bargaining.
I'd like to thank staff for getting this study done. It's, it's been a long time in the making and identifying the, the floor and the minimum for employees and identifying our staff members who are perhaps underpaid according to market.
Correct.
And then correcting that is a, I think, a huge step and, and recognizing the value that staff brings to the city. So I'd like to thank them for that.
And I think the staff would thank the council as well for the support that they received in actually conducting this project and funding this project. Because obviously without council support, this project would not be going forward. So I want to compliment this council and even the previous council for having the foresight to include this in the budget to ensure that it got done because it does put an end to a chapter that we would like to close.
Is there any further questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Elder Person Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Item 18.3, a resolution authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to execute an attest to a contract with SJ Electro Systems Incorporated for cybersecurity and supervisory control and controls improvements at the drinking water treatment plant for the amount of $1,369,700 and authorizing the Director of Utilities to execute any necessary documents related to this work.
Motion to approve. Motion by Schmidt, second by Finch. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Elder Person Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. And that is all I have this evening.
Thank you. We're on to miscellaneous business. Elder Person Murphy, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
All right. Mr. Macias?
Nothing.
Mr. Razak?
No, thanks.
Elder Person Finch?